Jason, you good? Everybody good? Okay, it is four o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the special meeting of March 30th, 2015 to order with a roll call, please.
Mayor, Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here. At this time, all who are available, if you could please stand and join me with a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, made in the soul of liberty and justice for all.
I didn't notice anything on public comment here. I don't know if on special means we normally, but I'll just ask if there's anyone here who has anything that's not on today's agenda they'd like to bring before the City Commission at all, anything they want to mention? Okay, great. We'll just move on into administration.
Item 3.1, consider purchase of one 26-inch walk-behind self-propelled concrete road saw with trailer.
Mr. Frands.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. This was a carryover from the previous meeting. We did revisit the issue. One of the questions asked was how old the existing unit was, and I just realized that I didn't answer that in the blue sheet. It was purchased in 1997, so it is, I believe that's 18 years now. We did check around with a number of different vendors, both with respect to purchase price and with respect to leasing. I've shared those results with you, I think, with regard to the purchase price, bearing in mind that the prices you get off the Internet aren't necessarily in bid environments, so they're going to be a little bit, you know, well, who knows? But nonetheless, the pricing we have, considering it's including a trailer, I think is certainly a fair price. We did look at rental options. Rentals for a comparable unit will range from probably $1,500 to $2,000 a month. We did get a few prices that were a little bit lower than that. There's one there for $1,400, and subsequent to preparation of the blue sheet, we did find another one for $1,200, but those are smaller units with less horsepower and less capability, although the vendor swore they'd run a 26-inch blade. Some of the other vendors thought that 59 horsepower was undersized, so, you know. Anyway, the bottom line is our feeling that the bid unit, given a price 15 years and given the fact that we have, or a life of 15 years, and the fact that we have easy accessibility to it 12 months out of the year, is the option to pursue. The annualized cost is about $1,920 a month for the unit, and actually, the maintenance and bid replacement on it comes in at considerable more than that. Cost of ownership is about $9,200 a year, counting the blades. Anyway, I guess I would stand for questions. We have Jim Toich here from the Public Works Department to address anything that I might not be able to address.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And I know more about pavement saws than I ever thought I would ever need to know.
Okay. Any questions for staff on this? The only thing I would ask is that, I know, I mean, not to bog this thing down anymore and go any further, and maybe it's a question for Mr. Toich. This three-speed gearbox, you mentioned that some of the people had said that the 59 horsepower may be a little light. Do we risk wearing, I mean, obviously, the other one lasted us 18 years. Do we risk wearing this one out? Is there an advantage for the three-speed unit?
Yeah, you know, the three-speed simply allows us to adjust the blade speed for the size of the blade, so if you put a larger blade on it, or you get into tougher material, and as Mr. Toich is pointing out to me, some of our streets will be layers of concrete, asphalt, and brick, and when you have multiple materials like that, apparently, it is hard on these units because there are different hardnesses, and every time you hit an interface, the blade wants to seize or whatever. You can adjust the speed of the blade to match the material.
That's there.
Either in thickness or composition, and so that three-speed gearbox is, I think, is a pretty important component of the unit. If we had a single-speed unit, then I would say we probably would be looking at more horsepower if we want to run a larger blade.
Okay, so, yeah, just making sure that's what we, because I, the single, like, the single-speed just didn't make any sense down there with some of the others, so.
Yeah.
Okay, great, fantastic. Appreciate the information on that. Anyone else?
He's darn impressive.
I'm telling you what, just throw anything at him.
I mean, I'm surprised you're not wearing a hard hat.
Yeah, well, maybe next week.
There you go. Anyone from the public here to comment on this pressing issue? No? Okay. Bring it back to the Commission for possible action then.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize purchase of a walk-behind self-propelled 26-inch pavement saw and trailer from McConnell and Associates at a price of $28,806.
Second. Motion is second to purchase the 26-walk-behind pavement saw. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. That takes us on to 3-2.
Item 3.2, conclusion of the 2014 evaluation of city manager's performance and periodic review of city manager's base salary.
This should be fun. Just kidding. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. City legal counsel notified staff that the governing body concluded its annual review of the city manager and performance, and had asked that staff prepare this item in anticipation that the governing body wished to take action on the city manager's base salary. City employees generally are eligible, and they were in 2014 as well as 2015, for a merit-based increase in base salary up to 3% effective on respective employment anniversary dates and dependent upon the results of performance evaluations. The governing body has advised staff of its intent to award the city manager with an increase of 3%. The last adjustment to that base salary was January 2014. As noted in the report, the consultant that did our last pay plan did include the city manager position into our executive staff pay plan, and under that structure, it is included in there, but as the contract section 3C also reads, "Periodic review shall be conducted within adjustments to base salary based upon such criteria and the approach taken by other cities in comparison to whether or not city managers are included in that same salary structure or handled purely contract-only varies." We did find that more than half were doing it outside of, but, you know, it's just a matter of preference. Okay, matters of the evaluation of the city manager's performance and the determination, bear with me just one second here. I lost my screen. And city manager's base salary are strictly within the purview and discretion of the governing body. Therefore, staff makes no recommendation to the governing body. If you choose to award, I would ask that you may do so by approving a motion similar to what is included in your blue sheet, and I won't read that to you unless you wish I do that, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you.
Do we want to hear from the accused? I'm just kidding, I'm just playing. I guess it's a public item. Anyone here to comment on this matter? No? Yeah, you're safe. Okay, I'll bring you back to the Commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city manager position be removed from the senior executive management pay plan, and that the city manager be awarded a merit-based increase in base salary of 3% retroactive to January 1, 2015, and that the human resources director take such actions as are necessary to implement the change.
Second. Motion is second to the stated motion. I won't read it again for you. Any further discussion on this?
I have a comment that I'd like to make, just in support of the motion, and that is just to recognize the city manager for his work over the last year that led to this evaluation, and I did personally give it a high evaluation, and I felt that a number of things contributed to that, and that, and some of those were increased level of responsibility and the effort to stand up an economic development organization, and all the additional pieces that had to be put together for that, and the work that you did on that. And then also, just continuing to guide, help to guide the Commission in some of the, in our policy and implementing policy decisions that we've made, that I think, some of which I think are bearing fruit today, not only economic development-wise, but primarily community development-wise, so I appreciate all the hard work that you've put in over the last year, and thank you for that.
In addition to guiding the Commission, I think that Mr. Gage also is very responsive to the Commission when we have questions or items that we like to have researched or implemented, and he's always been very open and helpful in that regard as well.
Anyone else?
Well, since we have the opportunity, I've certainly been in the unique position of having been new to the Commission, and certainly made the transition seamless, and I'm very impressed the way the city administration and department heads keep us prepared and well-informed, so if we had glasses, I'd say cheers, but since we don't, it's a job well done.
Kay, you want to throw anything out? We're not putting you on the spot. They already took my answers, man. I'll revert to that.
Jason was great to work for when I was on city staff, and just is great as far as working us through all the policy decisions we have to make, and looking up and researching things for us, and I appreciate that a lot. Ethics, high ethics is very, very important in city and county government.
Yeah, yeah. I would just echo a little bit more of what Dr. Davis was saying, and that's, I've always looked at city staff as a reflection of their management team, and although you guys didn't get the raises today as well, but I put all our city management into that, and I think how excellent our city, all our employees are across the board is a great reflection and on Jason's abilities, and hopefully, we'll be able to do something with their amounts next year, too, in our budget as well, and has definitely made, staff has definitely made my job a lot easier, you know, with everything that they bring to us, and like you said, very responsive with any questions we have, or policies, or it's been great, so I think we all, that's looking for unanimous. So with that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. That takes us to 3-3.
Commissioners, real quick before you do that, I just want to show my appreciation, say thank you very much. I enjoy working for you, I enjoy working with our staff, and they get a lot of credit because they make my job a lot easier, and I enjoy being a part of what we are doing in our, in this community to make it better for businesspeople and for residents. I enjoy that a lot, I always have, and like I said, as long as I'm able to help do that and be effective, I'll be here as long as you'd like me to, and continue to enjoy and get things done for you, and if not, then you need to send me down the road, so that's the way it works.
You got too many big projects going right now to do that. A little job security right now, on this next item, I think we'll hammer that home.
And I also think that Mike should, we should also thank Mike, because he's a great deputy city manager.
There you go.
Thank you. I give my readiest thanks to Jason, and I'm equally satisfied, so.
Okay, great.
Item 3.3, resolution numbers 15-7192 and 15-7193, establishing the dates and times of public hearings for consideration of a request to form a tax increment financing district and a star bond district generally described as being located in downtown Salina.
This is great.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As the item description noted, the only action item for your consideration today is just setting the dates and times of that hearing. There are a number of steps in this process, which I'll try to describe, and I want to start by acknowledging that tax increment financing and star bond financing can be confusing, and then to compound the issue, bond council had a couple rounds of revisions over the weekend to the resolution, so you have more paperwork at your desk than you received last week, and I'll try to be sure to take it slow and cover all the bases. So I believe you're all aware of kind of the activity and the momentum that's been building. It's been recently reported in the newspaper, and there was a public hearing at the community theater about a lot of private sector interest in investing in the downtown, and there's been a lot of ideas floating around, and they're not all on the list that I provided in the blue sheet, but you've had extensive conversations about a field house, and that's been before you for consideration. There's been discussion of redevelopment of the Lee buildings into apartments using low housing tax increment financing, which you have endorsed with a resolution of support. There's been discussion of construction of a downtown hotel with restaurant and conference space by Lighthouse Properties, which is a local company, and there's also been discussions of development of a private family entertainment center, bowling alley, and other activities. And as you know, the Save-A-Lot grocery store is nearing completion, so there's been a lot of discussion about how much momentum that's generated and interest in taking advantage of that, and so, as I noted in the report, those projects represented an exceptional commitment of private investment and resources in the downtown, something that you don't see very often, and it probably represents quite an opportunity, so much so that Salina 2020, Inc. has been incorporated. It's a group of local businessmen and individuals that are wanting to take the lead and help move this project along, and it's been recognized that the timing and the breadth of the private and public investments in the downtown could create an opportunity that we want to leverage through the use of tax increment financing, star bonds, and possibly even community improvement district financing. I attached a summary of some of those items, but I'll try to give you a nuts and bolts description of each. As you may already know, tax increment financing is a means where the base increment, what the taxes that are being paid, let's say, today, are preserved as a base amount that go to the taxing entities. Then, any improved value and increased property taxes generated by a project can be captured and reallocated for use for eligible project expenses. So that's kind of the starting point. TIF is property tax and sales tax based, but it is local, and so it captures the local increment. Star bonds add to TIF by capturing the state sales tax increment, which can be sizable since the largest portion of the sales tax is the state sales tax increment. So those are the fundamentals of both, and the Save-A-Lot project represents an opportunity since it's nearing completion and getting ready to generate sales tax increment. Forming the district at this time would set the base, would establish the base essentially at zero or very near zero for Save-A-Lot, and then be able to capture the state and local sales tax in the star bond project. So having said that, the request that's before you today is to pass the attached resolution setting May 18th as the public hearing date to consider formation of TIF and star bond districts, and is further detailed in the application by 2020, Inc., and it goes into more detail in terms of the project. Passage of the attached resolutions would not commit the city to the creation of either district or the provision of any public financing at this point, nor would the city be required to take final action at the time of the public hearing. So state statute specifies that from the date of passing the resolution, a minimum of 30 days and a maximum of 70 days are the timeframe in which the public hearing has to be set. The proposed date represents 50 days from today, and within 10 days of the passage, we would have to send notice to each property owner as well as each tenant in the downtown district, and we've been working with the consultants for 2020, Inc. that have provided background information on the tenants, and staff is prepared to meet that deadline. Both star bonds and TIF bonds involve reallocation, as I described, and one thing that I should note that I didn't have in my staff report is on the TIF, star bonds, star bond financing requires the issuance of bonds. TIF financing does not, and a possibility would be pay-as-you-go, where the developers of the project could just capture the increment on an ongoing basis rather than bond finance upfront. So consequently, during the life of the approved project, the property taxes and sales taxes that would typically be paid to each taxing entity are redirected to fund the eligible project costs, and as I noted, star bonds include the sales tax as well as the property tax, and they also include the state sales tax. The other thing of note is 20 mills for the school district and 1 and 1/2 mills for the state are preserved from that reallocation. So as we get into the math and the financial projections, that'll have to be factored in. At this point, there have been informal discussions amongst people that are aware of the project and the vision with possibly Saline County elected officials and school board officials, but nothing formal, nothing concrete. In fact, one of the things that we wanted to note is, if you pass the resolutions today, one of the first items that we'll need to address is meeting with those entities and getting them up to speed and sharing with them how the process works and what the vision is. I noted in the staff report that both the county and the school district essentially have veto authority over star and TIF projects. In fact, I reported that they, we needed their consent. That is not the case. It's presumed unless they truly take action to veto the project. So part of the discussion that we'll have is explaining the project and trying to answer any questions that they might have. At this point, there's a lot of vision, there's been a lot of conversation, but in the intervening 50 days, there's going to need to be quite a bit of work to solidify the vision and get refined details in terms of sources and uses of funds, cost estimates, feasibility reporting, that type of thing. In my report, I referred to the term as a project plan would be refined, but actually, the project plan is a term of art that you will be adopting at another step in the process. So just to clarify, there will be refinement of the details, including project elements, development costs, property tax, and sales tax, increment modeling, project phasing, financial feasibility, but actual presentation, consideration, and approval of a project plan by you would occur at a later step in the process. I also noted that there has been discussion with, and there'll need to be additional discussion with the Department of Commerce. For star bonds, it requires a finding of eligibility from the Department of Commerce to be approved and be able to proceed with star bonds. The date that the district is created, as I noted, it becomes important since that sets the base, and then that's what the increment is calculated off of, and that date is based off of forming the district. Assuming that we get a finding of eligibility from the Department of Commerce, and assuming at a future date you create the districts, that then sets the base for the purposes of calculating the star bond increment. So I noted kind of the next steps, assuming Department of Commerce issuance of a finding of eligibility, you would then be asked to vote to create the star bond district and the TIF district. You could postpone the public hearing and request additional information, or you could propose modifications to the proposed district. And you could also vote to deny the formation of one or both of those. And as I said in the report, it should be noted that creation of the district is not the final step for authorization. Within a year of creation of the district or star bonds, the project plan has to be approved. There is no deadline for approval of the TIF project plan, so you could form the district, still be working on the TIF plan in excess of a year if that came to be. Personally, I found it, I don't know, reassuring maybe to compare this project against the conformance with our strategic plan. I think I removed one item from our strategic plan that didn't apply. It's very much in conformance with our goal to be exciting to live in and thriving economically and socially, being clean, attractive, and inviting, having quality of life for residents and visitors, being attractive and well-maintained, having high community standards, having a downtown Salina that's thriving and vibrant, Salina being respectful of its heritage, and throughout Salina, adaptive reuse of historic and architecturally significant buildings, and encouraging and supporting economic expansion and market-driven tax-based growth. So I'm not aware of anything that has hit on as many strategic plan items as this one might have, or might. So the items before you, well, in terms of a fiscal note, at this point, the only cost that would be associated with you approving the setting of a hearing date would be the mailing that's associated with mailing to all the property owners and tenants, and we still need to refine that list, but that is a sizable mailing, probably between $1,500 and $2,000 certified mailings that'll have to go out, but that would be the only expense that would be associated with this action. Before I get to the recommendations and items for your consideration, I do want to walk you through the changes that took place over the weekend in terms of the resolution, and I would tell you that I really don't think they're substantive, but I just want to be sure to walk you through them. So you should have in your packet a new resolution 157192, and you should also have a red line, it's not actually in red, but red line copy of that same resolution. And so in that red line version, there'll be a tick mark in the margin showing wherever there was a change. On the first page, it's all formatting, returns, and spacing, and things like that. On the second page, in section two, the word initially was inserted, so it now reads that the proposed star bond project district, parentheses, the star bond project district, would be initially comprised of one project area. Similarly, in section three, it was reworded to say the project star bond project district provides for initially a single star bond project within the star bond project district described in a general manner as follows. The other changes were related to inserting the date and referencing exhibits A and B, which are the map and the legal description. So that's the extent of the changes on the first resolution. You should also then have the second resolution, which is 7193, and it has very similar changes in terms of formatting and spacing, and I apologize, I'm having technical problems as well. It also inserted language about initially, and, there it is. In section two, it had a very similar insertion of initially, and section three, it had identical wording in terms of referencing initially and the project being described generally in a manner as follows, and then it also had insertions of dates and exhibits. So as I said, I don't think any of those were substantive to you or me, but they seem to be important to bond council. So with that, the actions for your consideration are that you could approve, vote to approve resolutions 157192 and 157193 as presented, establishing the date and time of public hearings for consideration of a request for tax increment financing and a star bond district. You could approve the resolutions with an alternate public hearing date, and establishing an alternate date and time. You could postpone consideration of the resolutions to a specified date, or you could choose not to approve the resolutions, thereby denying the request to set the public hearing date. And I do know we have a number of people in the audience that are with Salina 2020, Inc., and I think they would welcome the opportunity to speak to you and speak about the project more specifically than I have.
Great. Any questions for staff before we do that at all?
As far as setting the date, does the date of the opening of the grocery store affect its inclusion into?
No, it could still be included. It would just be, the more time we allow to elapse would mean that the base would grow and the increment would shrink, essentially.
Just a quick question about the change on here to initially, and just a couple of questions about flexibility. It kind of seems like that allows for some flexibility. As far as the, on the size of the district, is it, if it needs to be changed, the boundaries, can it both be expanded and reduced, or can you only go one way?
Due to the notice requirements, it could contract, but it couldn't expand without having to do this process over.
And then as far as the establishing the date for May 18th, is that something that is also, if it's ready to go prior to May 18th, are we still within that 30 to 90-day window? Can we move that up, or since we published May 18th, it can be no earlier than that?
Unless we want to send 2,000 letters again, we need to stick with the 18th. With respect to the initially, the project plan is when the final details will be locked in, so I think the reason for the initially was to acknowledge the fact that you'll have the hearing, you'll form the districts, and then there'll be a timeframe to consider the project, and then ultimately, at the end of that process, is when you would approve the plan and make a commitment to go forward with TIF and STAR.
So if it goes beyond May 18th, we can?
You could postpone it.
We can open the meeting on the 18th and then extend it.
Yeah, you can continue your public hearing if you need be, and you're not, well, if you're satisfied with the information, there's certainly been expectation on the 18th to establish the district. You don't have to do it on that date, you could do it at a later date.
Right, okay.
Okay, any other questions for staff at all?
I guess I just want for the listening public, I was just wondering what the district would be or what would be included, and it looks to me like it runs from ninth to front and north to south. and North to South. Is that correct? Is that right or not?
I believe it's Elm to?
South Street to?
It would be Elm.
North Street?
It's Elm on the north and South on the south.
And Commissioners, as you know, and what we'll do is as we go along, we'll probably, we need to work on this, but set aside an area of our webpage where we can put important information as we go. But at this point, the district boundaries that are recommended, it's not a perfect rectangle, so keep that in mind, but you know, as you've heard, you've mentioned the north and south boundaries. On the west side, there's a portion that's along Seventh Street, and there is some portion that does get over to Eighth Street, just to give you an idea, but it's not a perfect line, so it's a little hard to describe verbally.
There have been a few that attended the community theater meeting the other night with me that have just wondered what was going to be included in that district, so that helps.
Historically, would there be any reason why someone in that district would not want to be included?
You know, it's hard for me to speak as to why they wouldn't want to be included at this point. As we, as the pieces of this become more clear, as we get closer to establishing the district, and more particularly when we, if that's done, when we start looking at a project plan that has to be put together within a year of forming the district, there's always something that could affect an individual business owner differently, and they might not feel like it's beneficial to them. But generally speaking, what this is intending to do, as Mike mentioned, is take the increased increment in tax dollars and apply it to public infrastructure that complements the development, the private development, the private investment that creates the increment in the first place. And so from that perspective, when you look at the entire area, we believe, and I think those that have proposed this and everyone, at least most everyone so far that's looked at it, are comfortable with the thought that it's intended to strengthen the entire downtown, and quite honestly, the community as a whole, but certainly focused in the downtown area. But I would say that as we go along, it would not, it would be almost nearly impossible statistically for someone not to say, "I don't like it for a particular reason, or I don't think it benefits me." And as that comes up, our job will be to sit down and speak with them and try to understand their concerns and see if we can resolve them.
Just a quick comment and question that you guys can maybe address, and that is that we've talked a little bit about overlaps and incentives, and maybe just because this is part of neighborhood revitalization area, and so will that be taken care of during the 50-day process? Will we have something and maybe need to have another action in association with this to identify those conflicts?
Yeah, Commissioners, as you know, there are various tools that are out there. We have, as we mentioned here, the STAR bond district, the tax increment finance district. There are community improvement districts, there's the neighborhood revitalization area, possibly even transient guest tax. There's some other tools we haven't mentioned that at some point may or may not be considered, but there are various tools, and the idea is to use them the best we can to complement what we need to do in the downtown. But when you deal with specific districts and are dealing with the same increment, we'll have to make a call on that issue. And so as you know, the TIF district deals with both local taxing jurisdictions and their sales tax that would go to them from retail entities, and also property taxes. The neighborhood revitalization area deals with property taxes. So one of the tasks for a bond council is to, by the time we set up the district, is to remedy and see how those two can either work together or how they may have to be looked at completely independent of each other, and if so, what action needs to be taken to address that. Because as you know, we have multiple, I think we counted 19, Neighborhood Revitalization Act, the NRA, projects within this area, so we have to be sure and honor those commitments without question, and yet still do the other things in the downtown we want to do. And we have a sales tax reimbursement agreement with the new grocery store as well, so we want to obviously be able to honor that in some way, and also be able to do the other things we want to do. So that's our bond council's helping us work on that question.
I've had a lot of questions when the grocery store is going to open. Does anybody know?
As early in April as possible, I think. I think it's, they're still working hard, but I think that's what they're trying to do.
Okay, anyone else? All right, well, maybe a representative or something from 2020, that seemed like the best place to start, is that? Or several, it's okay, yeah, a lot of information, it's fine.
Name and address.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, Don Boos, 2532 Angus Lane, Salina. We don't have a formal presentation tonight, that would be planned for the public hearing on the 18th, but we were here primarily to indicate, you know, our interest in moving this project forward. A lot of work has been going on here since about, oh gosh, July, I think is when we started. In fact, the consultants here from Buffalo, New York, we were with them yesterday, he's in town today, he's meeting with some of the constituents right now and tomorrow, working on underwriting all the feasibility to make all this happen. We've been very excited about all of the excitement and support we found within the city, within the business community, and city staff's been really terrific to work with. This is kind of unparalleled in my career to have everybody working together towards a common goal with an alignment of interests and nobody feeling like anybody's working against anybody. And what we had explained to most of the people that we've spoke with, at least at this point, creating the district in and of itself doesn't commit anyone to anything. You know, as we move forward, should the Department of Commerce find the finding of eligibility, and should the city see fit to move forward and then the project plan be created, well then you'll start to see some shovels in the ground maybe a year from now, but again, it's a long road, but we're excited to move forward, and we have a lot of people here in the community, a lot of the business community, working very hard to try and create something very special for Salina.
Great, thanks.
Do you have any questions?
Yes.
I have a question. I was at the community theater meeting, and there was a question, I'm not sure if it was answered or not, and that relates to the level of whatever that base level of assessed value is that you determine your tax increment financing from. And I was just curious, is that frozen for the life of the financing district for 15 years or whatever it is?
Well, I know on the STAR bonds, that's a 20-year period.
A 20-year period.
Now, on the TIF district, that's different, so we'd of course defer to bond council and other council, but I believe historically I've seen those 20, 25 years in other communities, but I think that would be part of the ordinance.
Yeah, but whatever that number is, is that, let's say if it comes out to be $10 million, say, is that $10 million frozen then, and all of the money above the $10 million is used for other infrastructure, or is there some level of increase through time of that $10 million?
Well, again, I'm not counsel, but my understanding is that the assessed value and appraised value may vary, but that it's dollar-driven, and so the amount of dollars of the previous 12 months, which I'm assuming in this case would be calendar year 2014, those dollars would be frozen. Now, as the ad valorem value increases, again, that increment comes back to the TIF district for TIF allowable expenses that are horizontal, infrastructure, streets, sewer, water, parking, and then perhaps for some vertical in, well, I guess, I'm not sure the TIF can be used on the museum pieces. That would be more STAR bond.
Okay. And I think the fieldhouse is being relied upon fairly heavily to produce enough, you know, out-of-town revenue or whatever that portion is, and I was wondering, do you have any kind of level of confidence that that will be the case?
The consultants here from Buffalo who's trying to determine that now, or at least he's in the early stages of that, but it's not just the fieldhouse. Fieldhouse is certainly a large component. The STAR bond piece has a large qualification in tourism. I believe 30% of the visitors have to come from 100 miles away, 20% from out of state. The out of state's the difficult portion when you're located in the middle of the state. That was his first comment last evening, that was his first comment this morning, it was his first comment at noon today, that remember, we're in the middle of the state. But we do have the luxury right now of the Steeple Theater, where we know that 70% of their ticket sales are from outside of the area, and they have outstanding records that they were able to help us with. Rolling Hills, even though it's outside the city limits, had 85,000 visitors last year, and they had detailed information by state, by zip code. They help us meet some of that criteria. He's now getting into some of the deeper areas, you know, outside of the proposed fieldhouse. It turns out that the entertainment center that we're hoping to get in actually has a lot of tourism also with bowling tournaments, but they're also examining the tourism that's related to Kansas Wesleyan, and then the relatively new medical tourism, because we found out that 43% of the patients at the hospital are from out of the area. So you add all of those together, and it does appear to be feasible. He's relatively encouraged at this point, but it'll be a few weeks before we get that final study, which I'm sure will be circulated to the state and to the city. In fact, I believe Jason's meeting with the consultant in the morning.
You have any questions or thoughts?
Sounds like lots of hard work, that's the thing.
There's a lot of work. Well, as Trace said, we're in the easy phases right now, we're just doing the talking, so as the feasibility and the analysis starts, that's when the hard work.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the organization at all, do you have anything prepared that they want, or no? Okay, anyone from the public here to speak on this issue at all? Matter? No? Okay, bring it back to the commission for possible action if we have no other questions.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve Resolutions 15-7192 and 15-7193, establishing the?
I think we need them separate motions.
Separate.
Separate motions, yeah.
Okay. But move to approve Resolution 15-7192 to establish the date and time of the public hearing for consideration of a request to form a tax increment financing district on May 18th, 2015, at 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt Resolution 15-7192. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question before we go on both of those for staff, and that is, is that as part of this, you had mentioned, and I wrote up both sides of my paper here, so give me a second. We'd said we're going to need two mailings on this prior to the 18th, and the estimated cost on that, roughly, just a rough cost on that, and then the question that goes along with it, if you don't have that, is, are the motions here that we're passing also authorizing that appropriation, or is that done administratively?
That's a good question. From a pure purchasing perspective, anything less than $20,000, I have the authorization on your behalf to purchase, so you wouldn't have to officially, I think it's going to be less than 20 of these, but.
Yes. Actually, it's one mailing to two groups, the property owners as well as the tenants, and my initial estimate is around 2,000 mailings, but as we cull through that list, I think it should come down, but the rough estimate's about $7,500.
Okay, so that'll be handled through our administrative, but then, any rough idea on staff time? I mean, there is a fiscal component to that, sort of, but is it?
Well, it'll take quite a bit of time. I'm not sure I can give you the number of hours, but that's a huge mailing. One of the challenges being in the downtown area is that it has so many properties and so many owners and so many tenants versus if it were a piece of, just a single piece of property with a single owner, developer, it's a lot easier to deal with from that perspective, but it's just a challenge of being in the downtown, but you know, so it'll take time with volume. There's no question, I don't know how much, but we'll have focus pretty hard because we have to get all that out by that deadline.
Okay, but my, kind of my questions kind of lead almost to that. This is a, this is a pretty significant, in my opinion, at least from staff and some of this allocation of funds. I think it's a fairly significant vote of confidence for the ability to get this done, because it's not, it's not just a couple hundred dollars and let's go on our way, so I'm completely supportive of that. I think that we've got good partners, and I think to, and this is probably mainly to my colleagues up here, is that I just feel like, you know, we've got the shared vision, we've got the strategic plan, we've got the comp plan, and I think that this is just a really good investment on our part to move this process forward with this group.
Agreed. Okay, any further discussion on that? All right, all in favor? All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of Resolution 15-7193, establishing the date and time of a public hearing for consideration of a request to form a STAR bond district as May 18th, 2015, at 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion is second to approve 15-7193. Any further discussion on this?
I'm so excited I can hardly stay seated.
There you go. We'll take a restroom break before the next one. Yeah, I would, I would say, I mean, I don't want to just, I mean, what John said is perfectly fine, but I think, just like you said, hitting on all the conformance with strategic plans, I mean, all of those things, what did you say, you removed one item?
Yeah, I think so.
You know when you're sitting up here, and this has been a project, I think, of mine for four years, and I know it's been a shared vision up here with this commission, it's very obvious when things are right, because the stars just sort of, the STAR bonds, if you will, seem to align, and everything comes down and happens for a reason, and hopefully 10 years from now, 15 years, people will say, "Well, of course it had to go this way." It looked like everything just fed in. It will look easy 20 years from now. People will hopefully look back and realize the investment that the group has made and some of the tough decisions that had to be made early on to make this happen, but I think it's the thing that, I had somebody corner me today at one of my meetings, this older gentleman who owned some property downtown that recently sold, and said, "This is something Salina's needed to do for 35," he goes, heck, for 70 years. He said, "This is something that's been needed for a long time." And that, attending that meeting the other night and seeing so many people come out, I mean, I think you guys were expecting 25, 40 people, something, and there's, I thought close to 300, so somebody said 200 and some, whatever, but informed people. I mean, I looked around and saw familiar faces with the city, I mean, from all different walks of the community. Everybody's supportive. I have yet to hear a negative word about this at all, and it just, you just, things just feel right, and it just is happening, everything is happening for a reason. I'm not a mystical person, but I sometimes, just something's in the air that happens, and I think, I think this is what we've all hopefully been kind of working for, and maybe even bigger things to come. I mean, we think this is big now, there could be more, there could be so much more attached to this. So if nobody else has anything, I'll, okay, all in favor? All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. That takes us on to other business. Is there any other business before other business? Okay.
I move to recess into executive session for 45 minutes to discuss legal, with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and to discuss matters pertaining to the acquisition of real estate for the reason that public discussion of the matter would adversely affect the city's position in relation to the acquisition of real estate, and reconvene at 5:30.
Second.
Okay, that's a long one, okay. Do we anticipate any business after this?
Commissioners, I don't know that we anticipate a formal vote on anything, but there is a possibility that you could have a discussion, that'll be up to you.
Okay.
So I just want to say that for those that are here, if they really want to wait that long, just know there's a possibility. So I wouldn't want to say no for sure, and then we have that, and you know, people have gone home.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, all in favor? All opposed? We're in executive session. Always something. Do they have another meeting after us tonight? Oh, were they having tonight?
Coach's on recreation.
Oh, really?
I mean, a coach's meeting.
Oh, 6:30?
6:30.
Got the old umpire up here. You ready to get back into that?
You know what, I'd never get out of the crowd.
Travis will get you signed up, I'm sure they?
Yeah, I think they still have the equipment, I probably don't have the...
Eyes.
Well.
Some would argue, you didn't have eyes back then.
Yeah, I was a referee back then, I was playing then, too.
Yeah. Okay, I think we're almost back in session, almost, almost, give a second here. Okay, bring us back into session.
Okay.
Executive.
We're on, okay. I just wanted to make a follow-up in some regard to the statements that I made last week concerning potential conflicts of interest and what I deemed at the time I felt necessary, adding additional...
Okay, I think we're almost back in session, almost, almost, give a second here. Okay, bring us back into session.
Okay. Wrong, okay. I just wanted to make a follow-up in some regard to the statements that I made last week concerning potential conflicts of interest, and what I deemed at the time I felt necessary, adding additional APA and AICP guidelines to govern and help our boards recognize and disclose conflicts of interest when they arise. And to that effect, and at that time, I had mentioned that I was interested in looking for clarifications of those conflicts, and what we've done as a board, and you guys can correct me if I'm stepping off, or staff can, is I believe that we want to direct city council to investigate the potential conflicts and to clarify those steps through the process, I believe outlined in the State Commission on Ethics Procedure, which I believe involves and includes getting letters of opinion from that board to establish whether or not, in their opinion, conflicts occurred. So what we've done as a board is direct the council to take those steps in the normal course of his duties here. We don't want to move it to the front of the line, or slow it down, or anything like that, we're just in the normal course of business to investigate, and that, get back to us on that so that we can further craft the necessary language to go into those further resolutions. I don't know if I missed anything on that, or if that seems to?
That get your, we need a consensus of any kind, or?
Yeah, I think you should try to obtain consensus on that, since it's an action-oriented type.
Okay.
Is that something we're all in agreement with?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sure. Okay, is there anything else you need from us? Let's see if there's. Okay, yeah. Anything else?
Nope, we're good.
Okay, any other business at all?
Nope, motion to adjourn.
Motion is second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.